We left the projector, so I'll give you, leave us a minute or two.
Can I do it?
No, I don't think so. Yes.
Chairs are always, I'm like, why do I feel like I'm trying to look over?
Those chairs are awful.
I had to re.
Want me to shut down?
I have no legs.
Those chairs.
Maybe that's what it was.
It almost looks like a skirt.
Doesn't work for anyone, the tall or the short.
You don't have a signal on there either.
I know.
Yeah, everybody's just crunching their numbers at the end of the year, so.
Actions everywhere with your HCMIs, as far as you know.
What's that?
The HCMIs are all tight. I don't know. That's weird. Is that on? I hear something in the background. Sure. It's what?
Audio is working.
Glad to hear it. I can't hear if we're, yeah, we had, audio is working up there. There you go. Something's happening.
Did you just make the second?
I did.
Yay, got it back. Well, at least we have one, that's fine. Keep playing, we'll get started. Just take it, we'll just do the periphery stuff first. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for October 4th, 2022. Per Agenda detail, we are live streaming on TV, Spectrum Cable TV Channel 1303 and on YouTube also under the Town of Camden. We likewise have a webinar in operation here. If you're interested in connecting via Zoom, the link can be found on the Camden website under the Town of Camden, of course, and under Select Board, Select Board Meetings, and in the Packet or Agenda, there is the link. Again, the, if you are on Zoom, please remember that we would request if you want to participate, to raise your hand is a preferred method. Otherwise, you can ask questions or type questions, but it can't guarantee they can be answered or addressed, and if they're not, they're not part of the record. So, please use the, the raise your hand option if you, if you want to participate. So with that, before we start the agenda, I want to make one minor modification to just reroute one of the items on discussion, which is the 2022 Christmas by the Sea Parade being held December 2nd to, from item 6A to item 5A, action item, so with the board's approval, I will do so. Given that, we will commence our meeting with the first item that we have is public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone here from the, from the public who would like to speak to non-agenda items, please, sir? And remember, if you kindly keep it to three minutes, introduce yourself, and remember we, we won't have an interactive conversation, but we look forward to your comments.
I'm Tom Zomwalt, Camden resident, and regarding Montgomery Dam, I was hoping that at a long about this time, there would be some sort of a public forum in which we could discuss, maybe I should back up a little bit before, before I've addressed this Select Board, and said that I'm in favor of keeping Montgomery Dam, but I'm also in favor of doing the river restoration. Seems to me there ought to be a way we can do both. And I was hoping that at about this time, there would be a public forum of some sort where people could get together and discuss various ideas. I read an overview of the, the grant application, I guess it was, that said that the town was going to look at at least three alternatives, one being full dam removal, the other being full dam, keep the dam as much as possible, but run a fish, a dental fish ladder up next to it, and the other to go over the, over the rocks. They said they would consider at least those three. Since then, Tony Grassi has come in with his ideas, which were interesting, but I, I don't think any of those are the right answer. And I have some ideas, and I suspect there may be other people who would have ideas, but I find myself no place to go with my ideas. And I think it's, time is, the time is right that if we, once the advisory committee or whoever starts going down the road at looking at three alternatives, and only those three alternatives, they're going to miss out. We need to have this discussion before they start going down that road. So, I realize you're not here to answer questions, I will just state it as a statement that I hope the Sub, the Select Board will arrange some kind of a get-together where the public and some experts can, can discuss what the options might be, and what's realistic and what's not realistic.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, good points, by the way. Any other public comments on non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands, I'm going to move to item two, which would be the board to approve, comment or otherwise, on, with regard to the board meeting minutes from September 20, 2022. Corrections, board, or motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made the second discussion. Not hearing all those, all those in favor? Five zero, thank you very much. Item three is a public hearing for the renewal of liquor license for Camden Island at 87 Elm Street. Is there anybody here that's going to talk to this item? I don't see anybody, so, the reason I ask is because the purpose of the public hearing is for the Select Board to solicit input from the public on the matter at hand, and allowing people to speak to it, for, against, or just speak to the issue itself, but since there are none here, I will, now I don't hear any, see any raised hands on Zoom, I will close the public hearing portion and revert to the Select Board deliberation on the matter. Any comments or?
I have, I have a couple comments, I mean, at least one, I mean, the, the application doesn't include a floor plan, which is usually either drawn or attached. It's not a big deal for me, but I, I mean, if we're going to request it, it might as well be filed, so if we can, Camden Island can provide it afterwards, it's fine. That's, that's the only thing, I read the application, I have no issues beyond that.
All right, we can certainly make a motion contingent on that provision.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Camden Island liquor license renewal contingent on Camden Island, providing us with the updated floor plan.
Second. Motion made the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, five zero, thank you. On our consent agenda tonight, we have two items related to the November election, obviously, and first is the confirmation of the designation of the registrar or voter's office hours for the upcoming November 8, 2022 state general election and MSAD referendum. By the way, those hours are normal working hours. The second item is confirmation of the town clerk's appointment of Peter Gross as election warden for the state general election meeting to be held on November 8th, 2022. Are there any objections to the items on the consent agenda? Not hearing, any of these items are hereby adopted.
If I can just take the opportunity, it's a very short memo that Katrina wrote, but she.
That who wrote?
Katrina.
Oh.
Katrina Oates wrote the memo, but she made the point that as a reminder, residents may also register to vote at the polls between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM on election day. So I just want to make sure that everybody hears the message.
Sure.
That in Camden, you can register on the day you vote.
Good, thank you. And in accordance with my previous, or our previous change, we're going to go into action items, but the first one we're going to address here is the 2022 Christmas by the Sea event being held on December 2nd. Does somebody want to speak to that? And I see a bunch of people getting up. Good.
While Michelle comes up, I just wanted to put it out there, if anybody feels that I have a conflict, I am on the Christmas by the Sea Committee, so if you feel that I should abstain, I will.
I suspect.
Stephanie.
I don't want to be a problem.
God forbid you're being supportive of the Christmas by the Sea event.
Just.
It is, well, thank you for saying that, from my perspective, I don't see one. Does the rest of the board see any perspective of perceived conflict of interest?
Well, let's see how her comments go.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
No, you choose now, or.
Hold your peace. We will continue as five of us, please, go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time. My name is Michelle Curtis, I'm a business development officer for First National Bank, and also the chair for Christmas by the Sea. So I'm here this evening to ask your permission to move forward with the 36th Annual Christmas by the Sea. It will take place on 12/2 and 12/3. Holly Anderson from Parks and Rec will oversee the parade that will be taking place on Friday evening, and that is 12/2. Following the parade will be the tree lighting in Harbor Park, with Santa himself will be there. We will then, this will bring a lot of people to town for shopping, restaurants, and just all of the other events will be taking place Saturday morning. Camden, Santa will come to Camden via boat to greet families, boat transport is being done by Lyman Morris. He will proceed to the Camden Snow Bowl for, 'twas the night before Christmas, followed by photos. We plan on keeping those safe, there'll be no lap-sitting or even really too close to Santa, we still want to kind of make sure that we have some space for families. And last year, we did a lot of the line outside and moved only certain families in at a time to provide, make sure we didn't have any crowding. The committee is also working with vendors and civics groups to finalize other events that will be taking place. One event that has been confirmed, of course, is the scavenger hunt, and that does bring additional families back down to town. We are planning on putting up the signs on the poles for the week before, and we do understand that's a one-week limitation. Are there any questions for, from any of you that you would have?
Please, you can't ask questions. No, I'm kidding. Is there, is there anything you think, Stephanie, we should know that Michelle hasn't mentioned? Well, any questions, board?
How many businesses participate in Christmas by the Sea?
Businesses? We have several that are sponsors and do help decorate, and most of them have, like, their own special sales, so a vast majority of them will stay open for Friday evening, and they usually have their special Christmas by the Sea sales. That's a long-time-standing tradition, so.
Extended hours.
Extended hours, yep.
Yeah, that's really a nice part of the event, I agree. Any other questions, board?
I was just also wondering what the plan for communication to share, you know, the agenda, the events, the extended sales, calendar. I mean, we're always happy to be an echo chamber here at the Select Board and to publicize those events, because they're good for the town, but what is the communication plan?
There'll be, definitely it will be in all the local papers, so we, we have several, we'll start soon with our first press release letting them over the day. Once we finalize the full event schedule, we'll make sure that that is in all the local publications, it will also be on the Camden Experience website, as well as our social media sites. A lot of times, we do have posters throughout the town in other locations as well. So we try to get it as, as out there as possible.
Okay, with that, board, we have a motion to approve the event?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, including Stephanie, thank you, five zero, thank you very much, and thank you, Michelle, for your hard work with your whole, your whole committee, that does allow, we know, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto our next action item, which would be to, a discussion, not a discussion, but appointing the remaining members to the Camden Conservation Commission. Allison, do you want to lead the discussion? Are we talking about two? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, there are two spots that are available, now that we have a regular meeting time, which is the last, or the fourth Wednesday of the month, from 12 to 2. Samantha Mortlock is one of the people that had initially, still not working, that had initially applied, and we left two of those positions open to see how the schedules were going to work. She's continued to attend the meetings, and I would recommend that we appoint her. There are a couple, there are several other people that would be great candidates, and I had reached out to Samantha Scharf, I think, and she had a really strong application from quite a while ago, and I asked her today if she, if that time would work for her, I haven't heard back from her yet. David Kibbe is another one who was, he's a garden club member, who the garden club had put forward as somebody that would be interested, he's relatively new to town. I think that time works for him, I haven't gotten 100% confirmation, but Ray and Grayson would also be great. I think it depends on whether we want to, do we want to get somebody new, that, I mean, really, anybody can come to the meetings, Beauty Parker's been coming to all of our meetings.
Sure.
Contributing.
Sure.
So, I think maybe in the interest of not having to bring this back again and again, if we were to appoint Samantha and David Kibbe.
Which Samantha?
Oh, sorry, Samantha Mortlock, since we have the definite from her, and David Kibbe is the name of the person that the garden club had initially put forward as.
Yes.
Wanting to have somebody involved because of the tree planting program that they also have, so that would be my recommendation for tonight, and.
Okay, any board comments on those two? Or other comments? Could I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the nomination of Samantha Mortlock and David Kibbe to the Conservation Committee.
Second.
Motion made the second, I was going to ask, are these positions full members or alternates? Or just be clear?
Yeah, there is, we had discussed that there's, it has to be staggered, so there's three that are three-year appointments, two that are two-year, and however the math works out for some one-year people.
Right, one year, okay.
Janice, and we had gone through all of that at our meeting, and.
As long as, as long as it's clear to them is all I'm concerned about, and that's all, that's not, you don't have.
Yeah, we went through this whole thing.
We don't have to go into the numbers of the Select Board, as long as they're clear, just don't want somebody to think.
In the minutes even of their meeting, but.
So, so.
Want me to just report back with that the next time, and we'll assume that it's approved, that terms?
No, I think once they're approved for their terms, they will be put on the website under all the committees, so, and.
That's correct.
At that point, we'll see that the terms are staggered, I think, I, I don't think you need to come back.
You're going to trust that.
Yes.
I mean, I'm going to trust you.
Somebody's got to trust somebody.
Rebecca Jacobs is the chair, and she's doing a great job.
No, that's not.
So the other, there's another Conservation Commission-related item, do you want me to save that for my Select Board report? Probably.
We have a motion that's second.
Yeah, I was going to take the motion, if you want to make, mention the other items, fine. Any other comments? All those, all those in favor is five zero, if you'd like to make a comment, since it's here, go ahead.
So one of the things that was discussed is the annual meeting of Conservation Commissions, the statewide meeting of all the Conservation Commissions.
Right.
Is coming up. Camden, right now, is not an official member of that organization, it's $150 annually, based on the size of the town, in order for committee members from the Conservation Commission to attend that conference, the town needs to be, you know, a participating member, and I told them that I would run that by the Select Board. I, I do think there's something in our budget for training and memberships and things like that, so I don't know if it needs any kind of.
I don't think there's any debate, I would just leave it to Audra to execute it.
I have no problem.
It's great that some of them want to go, so.
Yeah, I don't think we make up formality out of it, we can just do it.
Yeah, but what, what is the purpose? I mean, what, what do they learn, what's the?
About the role of Conservation Commissions, and actually, it might be fun for anybody who wants to can go, it doesn't have to be just them, but, you know, what other Conservation Commissions are working on in the state. As with all membership organizations, I think the quality of what's going on and the level of activity probably ebbs and flows, so I, I don't actually know how healthy the, you know, the Association of Conservation Commissions of Maine is and what their conference is like, but.
You'll find out pretty quick.
We'll find, we'll find out.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, just go for it. Onto the second, third item, actually, in approvals, which is the approval of the Select Board bylaws, which we had a workshop some week ago or so, we came up to go. Comments on the Select Board bylaws, or motion to promote?
So there's, there's a few typos and that need to be addressed, and also, I think there's one or two things that we had discussed that may not have made it, in particular, the 15-minute limit on the PowerPoint presentation, so, and I'm happy to work on that with Audra tomorrow morning and finalize the, the whole package, but I think we could, I'm happy to make a motion to approve those.
We approach, there is one, I know, I'm aware of one item, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if you, there's also.
One second, Mark. There was one item on the bylaws that's, it's missing from a discussion, which was regarding discussions, where we had set a 15-minute limit, the information or presentations must be in the packet.
Yeah.
And we would have questions after the presentation, and I think so. As a minimum, I would make your motion subject to your, doing what you're doing with Audra, but that, that element was the one that I had in my notes, it wasn't in there.
Yep.
So, want to rephrase your motion, or make a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes contingent of adding the, the new set of rules regarding PowerPoint presentations, limited to 15 minutes, being sent ahead of time, so they can be included in the board package, and with the new format that the Q and A will take place, take place after the PowerPoint presentation, so we have a more fluid discussion.
Okay.
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, discussion board first.
My only comment was going to be that it, to me, it makes sense to take comments.
Oh, I will.
Before we vote.
Oh, okay, well, that's a good idea, I have no problem with that. Mark, you wanted to say something to the bylaws?
Hello, Mark Ratner, resident of Camden, 14 Ragged Mountain Road. I watched the, the workshop you had on the minutes and read over what you have in the packet, and also went through the town charter about it, and I have two concerns about changes that you're making that, I think, limit participation. And one of them is, in the town charter, it reads, we're talking about the Select Board quorum, three members of the Select Board shall constitute a quorum, and so that's, that's important, but there are a couple places in here where you have by affirmative vote of not less than four members. There are two places where that's in the thing, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's a, to me, in my mind, that's not a legal change, it should be three members, based on what the charter says, the Select Board should vote, and I, I think, you know, changing that is, is not appropriate. And the second one, I have a concern with the last bit where it says communication, where, and I, having been here, done that, I understand it, but it says, section on how the board handles corresponds with the public. When a Select Board member is contacted individually, they will respond as they see fit. When an email is sent to the Select Board distribution list or a letter is sent to the board, it is the responsibility of the chair and the town manager to respond or delegate the response to another member of the Select Board. And I think that's limiting the ability of the people that we select to the Select Board to respond to the public, and I think that's a mistake. It's, the example I can give, if I have, if I write Shelley Pingree, one of our federal representatives, and we have a conversation, that's great, but this would mean if I were to write. if I were to write all of our federal representatives, if I wrote her, Senator Collins, and Senator King, that it sounds like in the same situation, they would have to designate somebody to reply, and I don't think that's fair in a democratic situation. I think anybody should be able to reply to somebody, regardless if they addressed one person or addressed five people, and I think that's really important. So those are the two points I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mark. Good point. But one of Mark's two points is good. We might want to clarify, because I think there's the four votes thing, that's all rooted in, that's all rooted in, well, it is, but no, it's rooted in, the four votes is rooted in the two-thirds majority. In certain situations, you need a two-thirds majority. When there's five of us here, that two-thirds represents four, because you don't get, let me finish, Mark. And when you have three people, only that two-thirds can constitute two out of three, but because the board can't vote for, it has to, a minimum of three votes affirmative, it would have to be three in that case. That's the way it works.
But where does it say? I don't understand where the four to one comes.
It's pretty standard in Robert's Rules in almost every organization I've ever dealt with.
Okay, but that's, every other organization...
It's not contrary to the Charter.
It's, but our Charter says quorum three to two. It's just a point I'm...
A quorum is one thing, and three people out of the quorum have to vote unanimously on everything.
I understand.
Right, so if they could vote to change something without four, they could vote with three. It's not wrong. It's just, it assumes a two-thirds majority, and I think it could be clarified perhaps, but that's the way it works.
We can check that.
I mean, it's only under a specific set of circumstances, which is when something is, you know, a previous decimation is being revisited, and so, I mean, that is pretty standard for something after it's already been voted on in order to, you do want the barrier to be just a little bit higher when something is going to be taken up again and voted on, and then to change the agenda, you know, should it be three or should it be four? It's, first of all, these are just, these aren't state laws, these are the rules that we're agreeing together to operate under, and so together, we can also, if at some point we find that Bob becomes, you know, the agenda every time we're wanting to change it, and we're finding that it's, you know, four is just too much of an obstacle, we, you know, three of us agreed.
We'll change the bylaws.
But at this point, I think to...
Yeah, I think it is, because honestly, and by the way, it's always been done this way as long as I've been on the Board, which has been five years, the, it could be clarified, though I think it is confusing when you see three as a quorum, which it is, but if only three people show up, they don't need four votes. They need three, and so we could clarify that. That's not a bad idea, but if there's five of us here, we need four. That's the only difference. Two of us here, we don't...
Two-thirds. We'll call it two-thirds.
Right, if you have four of us here, it only requires three.
Right, and I guess, just to make the point, whatever you choose to do, you're not going to be running afoul of the Charter, because that's specific to just a quorum for the purposes of holding a meeting and being able to vote on items.
So if you want to take a look at that, Sophie, as part of the discussion, just to be clear, and we want to be clear to people, but we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Allison?
So I do think maybe the part about the communication protocol, that language was added based on our conversation. I like the idea that there's a protocol in terms of making sure that everybody does get a response, that's somehow like an official response, and that we've struggled with how to do that, and that it should be anybody that responds to that group, or respond, when something is written to all of us, I do still think that each of us has the right to respond to that individually if we want to, but that each of us should be clear when we do that, that we're responding only for ourselves, and so I would like the language to be clear that it's not saying that, you know, none of us can respond individually if it's written, something's written to the whole group, but that each of us will make clear that it...
By exception, it doesn't say that you're prohibited from doing that.
Right, it doesn't, but you could read, you know, you could read it.
Don't read into it. We discussed this during, we discussed exactly that during the workshop we had, and we agreed, you brought it up, and we agreed that if you want to respond, you respond, but this was official town response, it would go, we would go through the process we described, so that we were consistent with Town Manager, Town Operations, and Select Board as to who's responding.
Sure, I just think it could be, it would be really nice and clear if we just were to say, if, when we do respond individually, we just make it clear that we're responding only for ourselves, because otherwise, the way we're framing it is two separate scenarios. There's one scenario where we are allowed to respond when somebody writes to us individually, and there's another scenario where the Chair or the Town Manager responds or delegates, which kind of makes it seem like those things are mutually exclusive.
I don't agree, but...
It would, I'd be more comfortable with a protocol for us.
But so let's think about this, so if each one of us responds differently?
That's a problem. That's what the problem is.
You know what? We're going to respond differently sometimes, and then people just have to, if you ask a grocery store, and I might say something different than you do.
But if you ask a question to the five members of the Board, you're essentially asking the position of the Board.
Correct.
So answering individually is not declaring the position of the Board.
Right.
It's just your position.
Right, so we should say so. Oh, you don't want us to respond at all? Is that what you're saying?
I think it's just going to be, I mean, I'm happy to let it fly and see how it goes, but I think it's going to be a source of misunderstanding and confusion, and...
And this is the standard thing, that we're all free to respond to things however.
It's like the other things, let's let it track for a while, see what...
I mean, I feel like if we had a problem...
If there's an issue and it comes up, we'll address it.
I'm willing to support it with the understanding that we can still respond to people and say, you know, I disagreed with the Board, this is the reason why I voted the way I did, but in the end, the Board voted four to one, and...
Yeah, we talked about that, and I thought we agreed with that, so I'd like to keep it the way it is and test it. We got other things in the bylaws that will need testing too, you know, the meetings and things like that, but I would prefer we just leave it the way it is and proceed with the only changes we discussed so far. But, is it the Board?
I mean, I think if we had a problem with too much communication, then the conversation could be different.
I agree. I agree.
But I don't think that we have that problem.
And if it does, we'll bring it back. If it does, if something happens, we'll bring it back as an example, but I don't see that happening, so let's approve, let's move on the motion that's been made and seconded.
Are there other comments on the bylaws?
I mean, I still feel that the wording of it, the way it stands, is unclear and leads people to believe, you know, I mean, we have a case right here of it causing confusion, so why wouldn't we just clarify that? So it's...
Because I've also seen responses that said, I got a response from Joe and Sally, but I didn't hear from the other three. They're expecting answers from all five of us, then you're voting online.
That doesn't...
It's a case-by-case basis.
So what?
I don't respond to everybody.
There's nothing in the job description that says you have to answer every email.
Mark, please, sit down. We're going to just finish.
I want to say one more thing about it. I did this for six years. It was never a problem. You're legislating something that hasn't been a problem in the past. Why legislate for it now?
I disagree. It has been a problem. I've seen it three or four times this year, but anyway, I suggest we let it roll as it is and address it if it becomes an issue. I don't see any, no, but nothing, nothing in there says, "Mom and me can't respond to an email from somebody saying, 'I don't agree with the position of the Board of the Town' or whatever." That's fine. We discussed that during the prior's workshop. So we can wordsmith it to death, but the bottom line is, I think there needs to be, some people have complained that they've written a letter to the Board and Audra, two usually, and haven't gotten a response.
Well, this doesn't mandate that a response is given.
No, it doesn't.
But that's kind of what it feels like you're saying, is that it is mandating that the Chair or the Town Manager or the delegate will respond, but that's not at all what that is saying either.
Oh, well, the intent was, what we discussed was, we would have the issue, Audra and/or I would get back and say that this is going to respond, you know, in one way or another, and this is, you know, give the rest of the Board information on what the response would be, but that's what we had agreed to. That was, how it's written, we could change the wording, but that was the intent.
No, I think it's a good point, and maybe we can rephrase it, and saying that there will be a response from the Select Board and the Town Manager, but that response does not preclude individual Board members from answering the query.
That's fine. That's the intent. That was the intent. So with that modification, and the other ones, is Sophie mentioned, are there any others?
I just have a problem with voting on that without knowing what that's actually going to say, because we're going to say yes.
Would you like to table the bylaws, redo it?
Yeah.
Just for the moment.
We can do that.
No, I think it's, I think...
Just for that. I think it seems to be really important.
Correction, bring it back next time.
But are there any more?
Yeah, are there any more?
And I want to be clear that sometimes the response from the, from the Town Manager or whoever to somebody that's asking questions may be as simple as it's not appropriate to give a response, or we're not saying that there needs to be like this, you know...
Blanket.
Detailed response to everything. Sometimes it's just not like, it can be very much like, you know...
You're right. You're right. I think that should be clarified, Sophie, to the point where if a response is going to be given by the Town, we will, Audra and I will decide that if not, it still doesn't preclude individuals.
You might just see, you know, your email was received. Thank you for your feedback, you know. There's no action pending at this time, or I don't know.
But there should be, I just think it's important that people are, recognize that they've submitted something, and even if it's, no, it has to be a response.
Just so they know, you know, it went somewhere. It was...
Yep, yep, and then still, individuals can respond too if you want. That's no big deal. So let's make that modification, but I need a motion to table this item to...
Make a motion to table until further notice.
Second.
Motion made, the second to table this action item. Alls in favor? Five zero. Thank you.
And these are all the, we have all the changes we need to make, Audra. We'll work on them tomorrow.
Right.
Thank you.
Last item, excuse me, on the action items list is the approval of the Miss Laney's carryforwards from FY22 to FY23, as you saw in your packet. Jody has listed some limited, three or four, as I recall, items for carryforward, and let me just get to those while we're talking here, and again, we've already approved the majority of the more major carryfours, but I guess Audra, these came up?
Yes.
Has a couple of loose ends, and I'm trying to find...
Yeah, and they're necessary, and it's mostly for the camera operator and the recording secretary for the Select Board.
Right.
So we're, you know, we're already...
Big position, by the way.
Yeah, we're already over budget on these items, and the idea was that we would take the money from FY22, carry it forward into 23, and it would cover those costs, but we forgot to request that during the carry, the meeting where we requested carryforwards.
And this is carrying forward $8,400?
Yes.
From FY22 to FY23, one, and the second one, because it was only budgeted $4,500, as I read it.
Yes.
And the other one was with regard to the public works...
The fuel depot that we're decommissioning.
So that's basically to transfer $9,838 from the FY22 worker, Public Works Fuel Depot Maintenance to the account that's Fuel Depot Maintenance Reserve for this FY23. Is that correct? So those are the two changes that are here. Any discussion by the Board? Anybody want to? Come, Sarah, Allison. Hit me in the head, it's easier.
I just make eye contact with Sophie. With the fuel depot, do we reliably get paid by all the other towns? Like, how is the closeout going of all the towns and school districts and whoever else that owes us? Right, like, I know that we've had issues with our billing in the past, not necessarily with that, but like, it took us a while to realize Rockport wasn't paying us for wastewater and...
Well, with this, I think that, you know, it's a much simpler system, since we're the ones who do all the billing.
No, I'm talking about, I assume that it's going to be simpler with maritime...
Oh, yes, well, that's...
But in the past, like, are we owed money?
We're not going to be, no, we're not owed money for our fuel depot, and for, you know, moving forward, everyone's going to have their own fleet card, so, you know, the organizations, such as the school district and the town of Rockport, are going to manage their own programs, so they won't be part of the maritime farms.
Right, I'm just finding it hard to believe that we've always been paid for...
I'm not saying we've always been paid. I'm saying, as we are now closing everything out, we're where we need to be.
And we're not, we're not passing along any of those closeout costs to our partners that have been using our
We are not.
Okay.
Other comments, Board? Note and the motion?
I make a motion that we approve the request for carryforward for $8,400 for FY22 for the Administration Transcriber Camera Operator to the FY23 budget, and the carryforward of $9,838 from the FY22 Public Works Fuel Depot Maintenance to Fuel Depot Maintenance Reserve.
Second.
Motion made, the second discussion, Board. I'm not hearing any on move to vote. Alls in favor? Got to get up to you.
You're doing great with having nice and close to you tonight.
I know, I'm doing, I'm trying so hard. Anyway, it's five zero. Thank you very much for that. With that, that concludes our action items, as I recall, and now we have a couple of discussion items, the first of which is EMS First Response Presentation by the Camden Fire Department. Okay, fire people, you're on.
Okay, so I'm going to try to pull this up. I would like to mention that we're having, once again, the issue with projector where something back there has hijacked the...
Let me turn that screen or something.
So in order for people to be able to see... Okay, if anybody on Zoom is going to have a little bit of an issue, though, so...
But since we have nobody on Zoom?
Not anymore.
Well, there's three. It says three. I don't know who the three is.
I often find that Bob French's comments are useful, so I want him to be able to see it. He's on there.
Okay.
Just give me one second to pull it up on the... Okay, go here, go to OneDrive.
It's in the packet.
But I have been using my computer for Zoom, so...
Oh.
I've been looking at the packet on my phone so that I can use...
Do you want me to give a little bit of an intro to this? So last meeting, we had the presentation from John Powers and Northeast about, you know, some of the, or all of the work that they've been doing over the past couple of years, and we talked about how the findings of the assessment that we worked on with Rockport, as well as the hospital, were integrated into how Northeast was reporting back to us and some of the changes that were made in the contract. Another part of that report talked about Camden's Fire Department starting up a first responder program, and that's something that the Budget Committee has supported over the past two years, as well as the voters, so Matt Heath has done, and Chief Farley have done a lot of work to get that program up and going, and so they just wanted to present on how they were going to proceed with that and the work they've done to date to set that up, so that's kind of the part two of how we're implementing the findings of that report.
Okay. I think it's before that, Allison, isn't it? I think it's right after the carryforwards letter from Jody. So it's, I'll go up more. You got it. That's it. Just go to the first page. Is that the first page?
We're going to stick with it like this from... No? Is this going to work? I mean, I can make it all one.
That's, you mean, the right-hand side?
What?
What's the letter there from?
I mean, it's just taken the packet, and it's just the, it's just the last...
I see, I see. Let's use it.
Thanks. That's what I was expecting you to say.
So we just learned tonight that you want a presentation that's less than 15 minutes, which is awesome, because we'd planned seven to 10. We put a bunch of information in the PowerPoint slides, just to give you information if you have questions for us, so we're not going to read the slides. As Audra said, we're to...
Keep the microphone, sorry, right close to you. I know, you can, you can pick it up and take it with you if you want.
We...
Which is what I do all the time.
Chat, or to talk about our EMS First Response Program, and we're just reiterating some of the same things that Audra just said and what John reported to you two weeks ago. So, and again, what our emergency medical services, as John said, you know, often we think it's just the ambulance coming to your house and picking you up, but it's much more than that, because it's actually getting you to the right facility. And once you get to Penn Bay, that's a lot of what Northeast does, is moves you to the correct facility where you get the right, right kind of care. Northeast, Lifelight, folks like that. that. And as John said, vaccines and things, providing education for the community. I'm in. So what kind of entities provide EMS? And one of the things I just wanted to pull out on, on that slide was that there are two hundred and seventy-six licensed EMS licensed entities in the state of Maine. And of those, a hundred and seventy-three are fire departments. So roughly, two-thirds of EMS licensed agencies are fire departments. So it's not abnormal that this is something that we're going into as well.
Next one. Yeah.
Next one, too.
Next one, too.
Awesome. So I know John went over this in his meeting, in the last meeting, but these are just a quick overview of the four different license levels. So your EMR on the left, and then next to that's your basic EMT, and those are your, your basic levels. The EMR is like traditionally the first responder level. They can do very basic stuff, vital signs, they can give Narcan, they can hold C-spine, things like that. Your basics can do a little bit more. They can give some basic medications, and they can help with some airway stuff. But then you move into your more advanced levels, which are your advanced and your paramedic. And so your advanced, they can start doing IVs, they can do some more advanced airway maneuvers, they can read some basic cardiac rhythms, and then your paramedic can do everything else. They can do twelve leads, they can do a lot of the electrical therapy, they can give all the drugs. And so, yeah, that's just a quick overview. You can read through it if you want. But yeah, just a overview.
And then so, as Audrey said, a couple of years ago, the four towns and the hospital commissioned this modified informed community self-determination EMS evaluation in for the towns of Camden, Rockport, Blancaville, and the Penn Bay Medical Center. Pretty mouthful there, but it was a study of the EMS services provided in the four towns and with Penn Bay. And John kind of went over what they've done in the last couple of years as a result of that report. And as Audrey said, the next slide, the, the recommendation was that they become a fire base, a fire department-based first response unit in the, in the four towns. And the recommendation was that one of the towns be the EMS licensing administrator, and with all four towns contributing. We had a meeting a couple of months before this report was released, the four fire chiefs, Kevin McGinnis, I believe the four administrators were invited and Audrey attended. Audrey was the only one. And out of that meeting, it was decided that we all wanted to go forward with doing this, and that because we had full-time staff, we would take the lead on it. And so that's where this has come from that we're, we're moving into this area. So.
How long ago was that meeting, did you say?
That was, I feel like that was late 2020.
Yep, yes.
Mm-hmm.
So the role of the emergency first responder is to get there before the ambulance and provide care until the ambulance gets there. And then also, once the ambulance arrives, they can help. And, you know, if you need more people, that they're there to provide those extra hands. If you go to the next slide, these next two are basically kind of how it's gonna work. So as first responders through the fire department, we're going to assist Northeast with any critical calls that they have in Camden. So those are your CDE calls that John went over last meeting. So those are your more critical life threat calls. We won't be going, at least initially, to the alpha, bravo, you know, my leg hurts or something like that. It'll be the more life-threatening, chest pain, trouble breathing, those types of things. And we'll be able to help before they get there, help them as an extra set of hands when they get there. And then if they need help, if it's really critical, we can have people go on the ambulance and go with them to the hospital so that there's extra sets of hands. And so how it will work, when one of those calls gets dispatched from the KRCC, they will dispatch Northeast and they'll dispatch Camden Fire. We'll both go. Sometimes they might get there first, sometimes we'll get there first. You know, depends what's going on. But we'll arrive. If we get there first, we'll start providing care, getting vitals, figure out what's going on, doing any treatments that need to get done initially, and, and then providing that kind of emotional first aid as well if, you know, someone's waiting for the ambulance. And then Northeast arrives, they take over the patient, we assist them, we assist them getting into the ambulance. If they need help, we can go and we can provide that help. But then they end up transporting the patient to Penn Bay or whatever hospital they need to go to. And then if, if Northeast can't do it and Rockland comes, or Union comes, or whoever else, it's just the same thing. We will go, we'll provide that care until they get there. But we're not transporting anybody. Someone else will do that.
And that's similar to what happens now on a, on a critical call. If it's a CPR in progress call, we, we get dispatched at the same time with Northeast. If we need to help provide extra hands or, or drive the ambulance for them, you know, we're, that's we're currently doing that.
Mm-hmm. KRCC, so everybody knows what that means.
The Knox County Regional Communication Center, who dispatches all the fire police EMS.
Great.
In Rockland.
Sophie.
So I, thank you so much for the, the presentation. I had read it before coming, and I, I was gonna say, I love that it's short. So thank you so much.
Understood.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's really, I mean, I get all the information I need, and I can, I still have time to ask a question. I remember the conversation at the Budget Committee when we started looking into this, because I was part of them, there, that conversation at the time. But I don't remember the costs associated with this project or the revenues. Can you refresh my memory?
I'm hoping Audrey just turned to dig into that. I think.
I, yeah, that's a really good question.
It's in the EMS, it's all part of the EMS.
And while, while.
Well, I can tell you, there is no revenue, because the revenue's all based around the transports to and from facilities.
Right. So it's, it would be a net cost to us, but it's a service we provide to the community.
Yes.
So we, we kind of won't do that, right? That's the whole philosophy behind it.
Right.
Okay. I have a second question, if I may. This might, Chris, you might laugh at me, but there are more and more people getting accidents with pets in their car. What are we doing with those pets, if anything? Does animal, yeah, pets, you have a dog in your car, you get injured. What do you guys do? Do you call animal control? What's the protocol for that? I mean, I'm asking the question, Bob, because our insurance companies are encouraging us to put stickers in our houses to let firefighters know there are pets inside, that we carry, you know, stickers or things to let, you know, EMS, EMT know that we have pets inside. And I know it's, it's something that people are concerned about. I know I would be if I were in an accident with my dog. So I'm taking the opportunity to ask a question.
We, we have pet oxygen masks that were provided to us.
Right.
And so if, if there happened to be a dog involved in the accident, and you were going to the hospital, and the dog was still there, we would contact the animal control officer and most likely bring the dog back with us to the public safety building until the animal control officer could, could take the dog.
Thank you.
We're not just gonna leave it, right? We're not gonna let Stevie Late take the dog back on the back of his.
Well, I'm very sure to know this, so thank you.
It'll be a little bit of a function of what kind of pet you're talking about.
Right. If it's a niwana.
Some pets I wouldn't touch with a ten-foot pole, but that's just me.
People often have them in their cars.
No, no, I think usually in your car, you have a dog or cat, maybe.
I think John has an answer as well.
John, we have, John, yeah, the mic, you have to come up, John, I'm sorry.
If, if it is a service animal, we do transport the service animal with them.
Oh, can you?
Sorry. Just as a clarification, I know it's, it's another level beyond pet, but anytime we have a service animal as well, we do transport those with us to the hospital. And then the hospital would, would handle that from there.
Cool. Good to know. Thank you.
Very important.
Does service animal, do they always have, like, identification? Is there an actual? I feel like there's a lot of fraud that happens in that department.
It's into the question that we can't ask. We can never really ask for verification of a, of a service animal. There are varying.
Levels.
Degrees and diagnoses that go along with the service animal.
Like emotional support.
That we, we don't generally question.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we just, we don't know.
It's on your job to.
To say we're gonna do our best to take care of the pets and.
I figured, yeah.
We appreciate that very much. Are there other questions?
And to get, to get back to Sophie's question about, about the, the budget for this program, it's thirty-eight thousand five hundred thirty.
A year.
For, for this financial year.
Okay.
Yep.
And, but will there be recurring cost?
Yes.
Of thirty-eight thousand?
Well, I mean.
No.
Yes, at least.
It'll be a lot more than that. But that's gonna be subject to budget review, as everything else we do in the town, completely public, because it's not small dollars.
No, 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 I, I agree. And so that'll be part also of the EMS review we do every year, or fire.
Yeah, I mean, the plan is.
Department review, like, will we get data on, on how effective this is? And how do we measure whether it's a good use of our taxpayer dollars?
Yeah. I mean, I know my plan is to keep like a spreadsheet or something like that where, you know, okay, when do we get there? When did the ambulance get there? What did we use? How much did that stuff cost? You know, because you're gonna, you have to buy everything upfront to, that's just how it goes to get your license. So there is an initial upfront cost. I think the recurring cost won't be that much, because hopefully, you know, we're getting there, and two minutes later, the ambulance is getting there. So we're not using.
Right.
A lot of, you know, maybe some gauze, but that's, you know, fifty cents a roll or whatever. So it's not, you know, hopefully you're not spending huge money every year. But obviously, there's something we're gonna have to keep track of over time. And, I mean, that's my plan, is to keep track over time of, okay, we're spending five thousand or ten thousand or whatever it is. I don't know, I'm just throwing numbers out.
And what's the additionality compared to what, you know, Northeastern provides? I mean, is this, is this just an incremental benefit we provide to the community? Or, or, you know, how do we measure that, right? Is it just that we're first on site, so we can provide emotional support and do the first super important, you know, caregiving gestures? Or do we have no value added? I'm, I'm curious about that, too. And you can answer that, but how, how are we gonna think about measuring this is important, too?
Well, I mean, we can, obviously, we're gonna do incident reports, we're gonna, we're gonna be required to do incident reports for many EMS.
Right.
So there's gonna be the data. But, you know, just the anecdotal comment of several years ago, somebody having a heart issue during a parade, and Camden PD being first on scene and doing CPR and applying AED before the ambulance got there. So it's, it's gonna be a similar thing as that.
Right.
Also, another, another point to all of this, because it, it did happen in the middle of COVID, so, you know, it's easy to forget anything that happened in the middle of COVID. But a lot of personnel from the town of Camden did take basic EMT training. So, you know, a lot of people that you would expect, like, you know, Matt and Chris, but then also employees you wouldn't expect, like Jody Hanson, who took the training, took the tests. She's volunteering with the town of Thomaston now, but she's, she's ready to come and, and volunteer with Camden when the program's up and going. And a lot of police officers as well.
Right.
And, you know, often they're first on the scene, they've administered a lot of Narcan since they started carrying it. So it's really an enhancement of, of, you know, things like that, where they're typically the first people on scene.
Hanson's triage.
Yes.
Allison.
So do we have a, like, data on the number of people that receive training? And then is there a test that you pass to become, is there an official certification or a?
Yep.
So do we know how many people have done that?
I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but I know we've had Andrew, probably six or seven. I know there's gonna be another police officer who's going to take their test. And then, yeah, so I, I can't, I don't know the exact numbers of who started and who didn't, but we've had probably at least two-thirds, I would say, finish it. Some people have left since then. I mean, it was, it was two years ago, so it's hard to say, but.
Moving target.
But a, a pretty good amount. Most of the people who are here, who did it, actually completed it.
And that's the EMR training?
That's the, that's to the EMT level.
Basic.
Yeah, that's to the basic EMT. But we'll, we'll be licensed to the EMR, so if.
Right.
If someone has that lower level, they, they could use that as well.
They can ramp up.
Yeah.
And so this is a good opportunity to plug that we, we have a couple of people that want the training right now. And we went to the EM, Knox County EMS Chiefs meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
And plugged to get a couple more programs. Currently, those cost, those tuition costs, there are no costs to the local community. I'm, I'm not really sure where the funding's coming from. I believe it's coming through the community college system.
Right.
So we're trying to get another program up and running in January. It would be based in Rockland at the Emergency Management Office. So if there are any folks who have an interest in doing that, feel free to reach out to us, and we can get them connected.
Great.
Yeah, we have a couple of people interested in doing that.
Do we pay people more? When, is there like a stipend that comes with that level of certification? Is, what's the incentive?
The answer to your question is yes. We pay them more once they get the.
Okay.
Once they get the EMS license.
Stephanie.
Yep.
So, um, did you say that the last conversations that you had with surrounding towns was back in 2020?
The initial conversation that we had was to, to talk about doing, putting together a four-town EMS.
Fire base.
First response.
Right, for the regionalization talk. So this part, is everybody on board with Camden taking the lead at it at this point, all this time later?
When the question, when Kevin McGinnis asked the question, the heads all turned in our direction. So the answer.
In 2020, though, right?
The answer to your question is yes.
But that was back in 2020? Or has there been other discussions from then till now? I'm just saying that there's a lot of different feelings going on between the towns. So I'm just making sure that there's been conversation, that we're taking the lead and acting on it now.
Not sure what feelings you're referring to, but Chief Beasley, Chief Keller, and Chief Flinkton are all on board with us doing this.
Okay.
Oh, Allison.
Yeah, go ahead, Allison.
So kind of like, you know, on that, the theme of moving, moving forward with regionalization or not moving forward with regionalization, my memory of, you know, the last time when we were talking about this seriously, and there was discussion of trying to get four, all four town select boards to meet, and.
Right, right.
The sort of chatter that was hap, that, that I heard on the periphery was all related to the price tag of it. And some towns saying, that's well and good if Camden wants to spend a million dollars more a year, but don't sign Lincolnville up for it. And, and kind of the, like, hold on, how do we, how do we deal with the fact that we work together as four towns, but we might have four different ideas of what the level of service is that we expect and how much we're willing to invest in it? And so, and even for Camden, my memory was that, that the cost was gonna be really huge.
Upfront.
And so I, you know, reading in the paper the other day that, oh, the reason that, you know, to hear an update from the Rockland Fire Chief saying that the reason that we're not moving forward on this is because Camden and Rockport are arguing over the sewer bill was very frustrating to me, because, and, you know, I think John Duke in the article had said the same thing, that it was like, this was gonna be a pretty big price tag. So it, my understanding is it has really nothing to do with, you know, so I, I do think it would be good to have some kind of update on where we stand, like, in this regionalization, you know, what are the hurdles?
So there's, there's kind of two different conver, two different conversations and projects going on around this. So there's, there's this, which is.
We're, we're talking about.
This all seems great, by the way.
We're talking about enhancing the services that we're, that Camden Fire Department.
Right.
Is offering to the town of Camden, and helping Northeast do their, provide their service to the community. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And all sounds great, and like, we can do that with or without the other towns, and that's just fine.
Right. And, and the other towns are, you know, last time we talked about it was 2020, and the three other towns, you know, they, they expressed some enthusiasm for, you know, joining this effort. Who, who knows where they're at, given everything that's happened now. But certainly, you know, these discussions about this particular project are gonna go forward with our existing partners. And then there's a whole different, much bigger conversation going on around regionalization that involves the city of Rockland, which has a very big price tag, that I think, you know, it's a, still a good conversation to have. And I think.
Right.
You know, there's motivation to talk about it, but I think that a lot of work needs to be done to talk about the, the price tag of that service, the different levels of service and expectations in all the different communities involved, and how that would even look.
The fire base thing is this old, that which I'm referring to, Stephanie is, and Allison, that's another topic, which has a lot of hurdles in it that still exist.
Right. And it's not, it hasn't been stalled by any breakdown in any relationship. It's sheerly a, a discussion about levels of service and price.
Great. Stephanie, you have a comment?
So am I to just assume that our people will only be responding to Camden, not other towns?
Well, that's, that is the premise, but we're all part of the Knox County Mutual Aid Association. So we could end up.
Going someplace else.
There was a really bad car accident in Rockport, or, you know, everybody was just, you know, there was some crazy thing happening, and we had people.
Right.
Yeah, it would be unethical to.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So
But we haven't had communication with the other departments saying that we're
We end up
Putting this program forward.
In Thomaston, we end up in St. George.
Right.
We end up in Belfast. There's a statewide mutual aid agreement. We could end up in Fort Ken.
Right. But I, my, I'm just going back to, one of your first comments was that Camden was going to take the lead on this. So it kind of puts it out there that we are going to be the leaders, the chiefs of this kind of program happening. So I just am wondering what the other towns are thinking? Have you had that conversation with them that we are starting this program and it is our intent?
They are aware that we are doing this, yes.
This is
Have you had the conversation with them is all I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom.
This is executive summary recommendation, part two.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, that's
Yep.
So it's there.
Yep.
And obviously, there's still some details to be filled in, but I think the overall premise is great. We've been talking about this for a long time.
I agree. I agree, lots of, yep. Thank you, guys. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Now, Mark, you have one more comment you wanted to make?
One quick comment. Mark Ratner, for the last six years, I was chair of the Four-Town EMS Committee.
Right.
And, and I did, I worked EMS for 20-plus years. And I'm very much aware, follow what, what's happening with EMS around the state of Maine and around the country. It's extraordinarily difficult for towns right now, especially smaller towns, to keep their EMS services viable. This is such an extraordinary program that we have, we have just exponentially increased the safety of our citizens for Camden. And that's what this is about right here.
Yeah.
To a degree that is just amazing that we're increasing our, our ability to do EMS and a lot of towns are losing theirs. It's, it's a wonderful idea. And the one thing, I don't know if I'm supposed to talk about this, but one of the people standing behind me is training at a paramedic level.
I know.
Which is astounding. So it's just the, the best program we could have and grateful and can't control what the other towns do, but for Camden, it's, it's amazing.
I agree, Mark. Thank you very much and thank you, chief. Thank you, guys. A great presentation, really, really succinct, good questions. But that, we'll move on. Thank you to our
Just keep us posted with the data and how it's going. You said the magic word, spreadsheet.
I'll move on to our last discussion item, which is an update on the harbor access points. I guess Beth, you're leading the charge without your water bottle.
I have a PowerPoint that I sent.
Yes.
Well
I
Holly and I
Am going to put it up right now.
Thank you.
If Bob will give me a moment.
Sure.
So just to start, um, the town of Camden is blessed to have six town-owned overlooks and harbor access areas throughout town. And I'm here to talk about these six spots, along with our new signage that
Oh my gosh.
We've erected in a few spots and we've been getting a few folks noticing them and, and wanting to talk about them. So, um, if you want to skip to the next one.
I haven't seen the one on Eaton Ave yet. That's great.
I was just remembering that we voted on this last year. I remember that discussion.
To try to get them all surveyed.
It's been several years that I've been carrying forward this amount of money for signs. And as our signs age or fall down or get run over by a snowplow, these new signs, they all look the same. We order them as we need them and our hopes is to have all of our areas marked and with these sign, with these signs. So, so Marine Avenue Overlook. You, we have dinghy racks over there on the left, which is the new that Steve put there this year, new this year. I think it went really well. He, he reported at one of the last meetings that he was completely full of all his dinghy racks all over town. So that's amazing. And for this community to be able to walk down and get their dinghy and go in at this access point to their boat, or if they're just tooling around the harbor, it's great access. There's stairs here that do lead down to the harbor access. This was taken Monday? Yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. So the Parks and Rec crew has been down there trimming up all of the plants and getting them ready for winter. Where the word, where the words are is two parking spots, as well as over here, there's, there's access to pull in. So there's a few, few spots if people are coming from, away from this community that can enjoy this spot.
You can park on the street, just not blocking drivers.
Correct.
Correct.
The next one, I think we're moving on. This is Harbor Ave Overlook. There's a trail, which is not very obvious, but that's me walking on the trail. Holly had to put a picture of me in there.
Yes, she did.
But it currently could use some, some better
Sure.
Obvious. This is the trail where you go down. It does lead you down all the way to the harbor if you want to continue to scroll. There's a couple more pictures of this one. It's not an easy
I see.
Uh, little hike. I mean, you
We call this one the unimproved access.
Correct, correct. It also has a tiny, tiny little footbridge. I mean, we're talking this wide over a stream bed. You'll see it in one of the next photos. There it is.
By a resident in the area. Actually, it's really holding up very well.
It's sturdy, definitely, but it's, it's a balance being for people that
It's not right for everybody. We really don't want to, we're not really encouraging people to go down. And we're like, they have the right to.
And if It is a good drop. That picture does not give it justice. The drop is easily this.
Oh, yeah. That's because of stormwater problems, but
And then here you are basically at the end where you can view, or you can go down on to the, to the ledge and walk down on the rocky beach. Eaton Ave. This is an overlook that is just an overlook. There's no beach access here. You're basically looking down ledge to the ocean. But it has a beautiful bench there. It has gorgeous views, not much parking.
I see.
Yep.
Though the town, like, access does go to the beach. There's no real safe way to
Correct.
Get there, but it's, we do own to the beach.
Correct, correct. The next one is Bay Road. So we're over on the other side of the harbor.
Right.
Is it straight?
Yes, yes. I think the way, wherever we were standing, we, we weren't straight. So, yes, it's straight.
You asked me.
Yes. Oh, that's true. Okay. Bay Road, um, you can access the harbor, but not easily
Yeah.
From here. It's on the other side of, of the sign. There's a little tiny trail, but it's grown up with, I think it's that bam, evasive bamboo type
Oh.
That's right there.
Oh.
The next one is our Curtis Island overlook and
I know somebody who's gonna be very happy about this.
This is a sweet spot. This is a really nice, it's, it's got a trail down to it where there's a, a bench, a wooden bench, a tray, basically, that you're sitting on. But you, this is like the only public place where you can view the island lighthouse. There we go.
Yep.
Every night.
You do?
Yeah. I live around the corner, so
So we have a sign, that is the actual sign that Holly had printed. We have it, but we are waiting to hear from Jeremy as to what kind of growth we can cut down and make room for that size of a sign.
I see.
Because right now, it's, it's nailed to the, to the tree, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just like a rounded sign out of wood.
Doesn't look like
Nailed to a tree.
No, no, it doesn't look like
Doesn't, it looks like one of those private property signs that, that property owners were there, put up. It's like, I never even knew it was there. We have 80 feet there. It's, it's an 80-foot right-of-way there.
It's a beautiful place and, and I encourage a lot of people to go and visit because at sunset, it's completely stunning. It's like, there's no bad weather at that spot. It's, every day is just amazing.
You don't have bad weather.
No bad weather in that spot, just amazing.
Okay, and then our last one is Sherman's Point Road Overlook. This one was never included in our area maps that we've done over the years. People have known about this spot, but it's kind of been quiet for a while.
Yeah.
And when we visited it, it's got quite a bit of growth that would need to be, you know, cleared out so that you could see. And there is kind of a path, but I think this spot would need some kind of step or gangway if we wanted harbor access there.
Is one of those spots, I think, is it Carla who came, Carla Doremas, who came to the board a few weeks ago and said that, that the residents of
Sherman's Point.
Sherman's Point.
Carla lives on Harbor Road before we
Is it Harbor Road or?
Harbor.
We have opinions about Sherman's Point Road too.
She was not, it was not an opinion. She was, she was mentioning a, a little right-of-way there that the, the neighbors have been maintaining. So I was just
Oh, that's Harbor Road. That's, she built the, her husband built the footbridge.
Yeah, Carla's the one who has been maintaining it.
Okay, yes.
This one needs maintenance.
This one needs Carla's touch.
All right, that's what I meant. It's like, Carla!
No, but we could at least trim up those bushes so that people can, because people do use it.
Is there a full sign for this one?
That is a question. If, that we could propose signage, just like all the other ones?
Right.
We current, there isn't currently a sign at all.
Yeah, why would anybody know it's a harbor access if they don't see a sign?
So there's literally a, there's, this one has a long history of a
Does.
Bit of a legal battle, as many of them do, actually. And there's an agreement with one of the property owners. And the agreement actually references that we will put up signage. And it says where we will tell people to park and not to park and all these things. What the town seems to have chosen to do, many, not you guys, or who, who knows, but it's just to not put up any signage, not even saying like, you can't park here, or you can park here. And the result of that has been that you go down there and all you see is private property, private property, private property. And you really have to know, like, I'll take out my phone and stare. I'm like, yep, I'm in a public place right now. I know I am. And then if you're brave, you can slide down. But we, I mean, it's still a beautiful view right there and people have the right to try to slide down that embankment and some do. So we should put this sign. What?
How do you get that back?
The riprap, Holly. There's been a, there's also a long history there's of, of public access beyond that fence, which is a much longer story to get into, but there's a piece we made there too.
Could we, could we put a map on the town website with those points? So that
We have it on our Parks and Rec and Open Spaces map.
Okay, okay.
But Sherman's Point Road is not included.
Right, I think, this is one that really
Needs to be on.
We have to decide whether or not we're serious about making this an obvious, because there are some issue, legal issues going on there.
No, there aren't legal, it's very well defined. So there's, there are people that believe that the, the access should extend further than it, than it is currently defined. But there is absolutely no legal gray anything about where it is right now. It's just like the other ones.
Okay, then if that's the case, we should be proceeding to put a sign here and do some minimal maintenance, whatever the heck is somehow in our program with Parks and Rec. I mean, it's just a natural offshoot of the other four, five, or six that
Six.
Six.
Five.
This would be number six, yes.
So this one, sounds like it would need some improvement to allow people to be on it safely, an embankment?
It's actually much safer than, it's kind of, it would be like Eaton Ave, really.
Than even Eaton though.
Yeah, because if you did choose to try to go over, you wouldn't plunge to your
Eaton is like
She'd die.
Yeah, this one is no different than, than Harbor Road or
It's not, it's just not clear.
It's not clear.
And I think starting point to me is the sign. Second part is, do some, do some maintenance.
So what you're saying is, sorry, Bob.
Go ahead, Tom.
So what you're saying is people could get to a certain point on that without having to create significant structure to allow them safely on it?
Well, these pictures aren't giving you justice as to how, when you come down Sherman's Point Road, the road goes
Right there.
And it just ends and then there's our access.
Right.
And there's a little bit of grass there and then those bushes.
It's just not marked.
It's not marked. And then there's ocean. I mean, it's
Well, let's move to get it marked.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's not
So the, the short-term plan, we're gonna get, we're gonna get it signed, we're gonna remove some vegetation because there's some plants that have gone to seed and kind of grown up. And then the next step, longer term, and this is true for a few of them, we would look at how do we, you know, what kind of
Those two were good. Those last two showed the pic, showed it.
I was like, let me take a selfie at Sherman's Cove, my favorite spot. Sure, yeah, the last two did show.
Yeah, but the point is, we've, we've got to make it, there it is.
So it's here. So it's in between this and it's very
And this big tree.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I believe it's an oak, but it's between that fencing and that tree where our access is.
Okay, but the bottom line is, it's not clear to the public
Right.
On anything today. It's not clear on a map, it's not clear on a sign. We're gonna start with square one and put a sign up and hear the flak fly. And, and also do some cleaning of the bushes and that kind of thing. I don't think that we need to do anything just to say, get, get it, get her done at some point in time, right, Audra?
Well, I think that, you know, we're gonna need to come back with a few of these as part of the budget process and just say you know, we'd like, we, we think that, you know, we need to look at building steps
Yep.
To, to allow people to get down to the beach here. We think that we need to build like a
Gangway.
A gangway or like a boardwalk or something to be able to get down here. You know, there's going to be a few different things depending on the spot.
We should do anything we, that a rational person thinks is safe. You know, having one board going across a crevasse is not smart. Because in a rainy day, somebody's going to, icy day, somebody's going to get hurt. And that's kind of negligent to me.
As they would if they tried to do that on ledge. So this is, that's why they're called overlooks.
No, I agree. But when, when you put a man-made something in the process, you're opening yourself up for vulnerability. But I'm saying.
Sure, yeah, we should definitely improve them.
Just improve it. That's all. Just improve it. No, that's great.
This shows this. I mean, really.
Good job, Beth.
Yeah, it's just a matter of clearing this right there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a great, it's a great lookout here. It's just that, like I said, how long it took me to figure out there was something there, I think Allison told me.
Getting complaints from people about this fence.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we look into it, and that's a little bit of a complicated situation. But what's not complicated is the access right.
Right, there.
Here.
Right.
And. You know, people, you do see people kind of scurrying down there. And one thing that you need to be careful about is that the, sometimes what happens is the, the tide is out when people go over there. And then the tide comes.
And it's very shallow there, yeah.
Right, right.
And then you can't walk along the beach. And so some of the property owners over there, you know, object to stranded people needing to cross over their lawn, which, you know, is an issue anywhere along the coast. So in the long term, it would be nice to have a tide chart there and all kinds of instructions and.
Don't get, don't get landlocked.
But in the meantime, people can look. I mean, you can enjoy this view. It's amazing.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you very much for the update especially. Thank you, Holly. And carry on, make tough. With that, we'll move on to our manager's report. That would be you, Audra.
Yes.
Were we looking at the financials?
Yeah, it's not yet on the agenda. Want me to move it?
Oh, sorry.
You can move it.
No, no, I'm fine.
I mean, I don't care, you know. Okay, let's, let's just do the manager's report.
All right, I'm going to make a public service announcement. So.
Thank you, Stephanie.
MDOT is going to be paving Washington Street from Elm Street all the way up to Gould Street first thing, starting on Thursday morning. This Thursday, the sixth. And once the paving on Washington Street is complete, they're going to begin paving Union Street. And that'll go from Belmont Avenue all the way to the Rockport Town Line. And that could carry over into Friday.
I see.
So going back to Washington Street, we're asking that people not park along the street for that whole segment from Elm to Gould.
Yep.
Because, you know, their vehicles will have to be moved due to the paving equipment. What's that?
It's coned off now.
Yes. Yeah, down here it is. But it's going to go all the way up to Gould. So that's quite a swath.
I see.
So that's, that's kind of it for paving. I had a visit from Mary Hayes from the Garden Club. She's their Civic Committee Chair, I believe. So she approached me about applying for a grant with the National Garden Club Association for funds to make improvements at Lake Beach. So around the area called the Children's Amphitheater, the Garden Club would like to do some planting of, you know, they want to look at a lot of native plants and, you know, how can they sort of.
I see.
You know, make that area a little bit more usable and less, less just lawn and grass and.
A little more landscape.
Little more, or just particularly around that area.
See.
Who's responsible for cleaning up the staircase?
For Lake Beach? Yes.
Because, so there's rugarosa there. And I'm thinking that people who really, people who really need to hang on to the.
Railing.
To the railing, it's hard because rugarosa is kind of overtaking. So if, if they can kindly trim that as well.
Yeah, I'm sure that they're, they'll kind of do what they did on Marine Ave.
Right.
Yeah, to bring it to their attention. So we can, we can ask them about that. So, and this was really just a placeholder. They, they just want to, you know, do something. They have a few different areas they want to look at. I told them about the green space on the public landing. They're interested in doing something there. But, you know, I, I told her, just move forward with the grant application and then we can talk about details after you know whether or not you received it.
Perfect.
So with the, with, with Lake Beach though, I think we should be careful that improvements that are made there are beneficial to recreation and kids playing and.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that.
The Children's Amphitheater, as lovely as it is.
It's not really a children's.
It's not really.
And it's not safe. I mean.
A children, it's not what children would want to be there.
Like that, yeah.
And so.
So we, we talked a lot about that.
Situation over at Lake Beach where it becomes a garden that can't be touched or.
She had really good ideas about plantings that would just make it better as a, like a, like a playground. Like would, would fit in with adding more playground equipment over time.
And move that boat. Other side.
Sorry, I keep forgetting to tell them to move that.
It's really not. I mean, it's nice to see them finish some playground equipment there. So I, we want to encourage that too, not just criticize.
The issue, the issue is not to remove it. The issue is to move it to the other side of the swing. Because where it currently is, people cannot play frisbee or soccer or run around. And that, that space is really cool when you want to have a, a kind of a play.
Activity.
Activity. And that boat right smack in the middle of it is just like killing this.
They should go in the Children's Amphitheater is where it should go.
Oh, I would love to do that. I think it's great. But if at least it could be moved to the other side.
Revisited when they get their money for the grant.
Yes, yeah.
So say that they're going to, that's a funny time to revisit things is when, because they're going to say what they're going to do in the grant. I just want to avoid.
They are.
We've, we've had this issue in the past where the town applies for grants to do one thing and then.
Is it that specific in the grant?
She, she seemed to think it was pretty flexible.
That's right. That's.
And it's, it's just a really short deadline. So they just wanted to get in something quickly.
Right, okay.
So.
I know. We'll see.
Can, can we review the grant application or not?
Got ourselves in trouble in the past.
If we have associations that are.
Like the mural or the.
Yeah, that was a little.
Well, if it's a short fuse, I got a funny feeling we have a problem with that. Right?
What's that?
For us to get involved in a review or you to get involved in a review of it, if it's.
Very short fuse. Yeah.
All right. Next.
So we've, we've hired a very experienced planner. So we offered them the role. They accepted. I can't make the announcement yet about who that individual is because they need to give notice to their current employer. But both Jeremy and I are very, very excited. I've never, I've, I've hired a lot of planners over the years. I've never hired anyone with the background and experience this person has.
That's great.
Going to be just a huge benefit for Camden.
How does Jeremy feel about that comment you just made?
He was a code enforcement officer.
Okay.
So the Midcoast Council of Governments, they're changing the format of their general assembly. So it used to be just sort of a procedural thing. They're trying to switch it up so that they have speakers. It looks like they're going to get Hannah Pingree from the Governor's Office of Innovation and Judy East, who heads up the, I wish I remember what it, what the program is called. But it's basically like the, you know, the former state planning office and, and where that sits in the remnants of it. So Judy East heads up that division. And so they're going to come and talk about, you know, regional planning. And that will be on November 16th. And we have been asked to host at the Snow Bowl. So that's, I really encourage all of you to come. We're members of MCAG. I think that Knox County has always been a little bit of a late adopter in our engagement with that organization. But, you know, it's really making really great strides because they've been able to hire more staff. They have a really wonderful executive director who's a very experienced economic community development planner within the state of Maine. And they're making some great changes. And I think it's nice that it's going to be local this year. So.
Just send us a reminder via email, please.
And the invitations and all of that. And also part of the general assembly will be input to the strategic planning. And Knox County's strategic planning sessions for MCAG were really poorly attended in comparison to like our neighbors to the south, who are part of that organization as well. I'm continuing to meet with a small group of people about Curtis Island and trying to, you know, get a handle on what's required for the, you know, bringing the buildings up to a standard and what's the schedule going to look like for maintenance on an ongoing basis? And what's the vision for how that's going to be managed? And, you know, how do we bring the select board something that addresses the future of Curtis Island comprehensively? So as we discussed last meeting, the first thing that we needed to do was get a proposal for asbestos and lead abatement. So we have that now. There was only, you know, really one company that was interested in doing the work. There's really only two in Maine that do this work. So funds that were budgeted for painting are going to be used to pay for the abatement activities. Because until that's done, we really can't get anyone in to look at the condition of the, the structure. This is mostly for the caretaker structure to, you know, even give us an idea of, you know, what needs to be done comprehensively to that building. So that's really the, the first important thing that needs to happen. I wanted to just use this as an opportunity to remind any contractors or homeowners, if you're doing work on your, a building and you know that you're going to need to set up equipment or, you know, vehicles or anything in the town's right of way, to please come to my office and get a right-of-way encumbrance permit. I'm, I'm not.
Which means sidewalks, right?
Sidewalks, parking spaces. You know, please come to my office and get one because there are certain things, it's really easy for us to, you know, direct people to do that. Like if they have to go through the code office to get a permit issued, then they're usually sent to me. But there are certain projects where, you know, a permit's not required. So, you know, there, there's been some activity, particularly on Main Street, where the sidewalk has been taken up. And we didn't know about it because, you know, they didn't need to get a permit. So they didn't come to my office to ask for one. So just putting out notice about that. I got a call from an MDOT staff member in their bridge program about setting up a meeting about the Main Street Bridge Project. So we're working on them to schedule a meeting about that to touch base and, you know, ask questions about the project and figure out where it is in the schedule. And at one of the upcoming meetings, I will be bringing forward an old policy, policy slash process that I wrote up back in, I think, 2018 about neighborhood traffic calming requests. Because that's something I think that I'd say over the past year, we've received quite a few of them. And so having a process for how we direct people when we.
That's on our issues log, isn't it?
It'll be.
It will be on the issues log, yes. So it really wasn't the right time, I think in 2018, 19, whenever that was.
It was 18, I don't remember. It was before COVID. I know that.
Yeah, I mean, for whatever reason, it wasn't the right time. But I think it, it might be a better time to start talking about that again.
Sure. Cool. On to select board reports. Ms. Stephanie?
I last week attended the emergency response training over in Rockland at.
At KRCC.
KRCC, that's correct. It was riveting content and just helped us be NIMs compliant.
Exactly. It's required. Thank you for doing that, both. Ms., Ms. Sophie.
That's all, that's all I got.
I, I'm going to have a, use my time to make an appeal to property owners and to people who use those tiny little plastic flags to put property boundaries, whatever. I see them flying all over the place right now because of the wind and the rain. Yeah, you know, they, they have little iron prongs.
Or boundary surveys or.
Surveys or when you put a, an invisible fence for your dog.
Yeah.
And those little plastic flags are now coming down in drains and in culverts and things like that. So pick up your flags. Just go around your properties and pick up your flags. It's pollution. It's plastic. We don't need it. That's all I'm going to say.
Have the people put their names on it so we know when they wind up in the sewer.
And I will bring it back to them personally.
Okay.
It's just, please pick up your flags.
I forgot to bring up last time that I attended the library Board of Trustees meeting. Sophie and I are both liaisons to that. Sophie was out of town. And a number of interesting things were brought up, but I will limit them. Unfortunately, Julia Pierce, their programming director, is leaving. And so that was really disappointing because she's done a great job. So they're going to be looking for somebody there. They are very near to their goal for their capital campaign, for their, campaign for the future of, I can't remember where, there was 2 million or 2.5 million. But they are like extremely close. And they are also nearing, I think it's the last couple hundred bricks that they'll be selling. So if you want a brick, it's, you could end up losing your opportunity if you don't get on that fairly quickly. And one of the recurring themes that was brought up again is the issue of the green roof. And kind of trying to loop back so that we all have a shared understanding. The, the green roof is the roof of the underground portion of the library. And for those that don't know, a few years back, there was concern that it might be nearing the end of its warranty period and that we should begin some kind of like preemptive replacement. You know, a very, which is very expensive. Some, you know, like half a million dollars or a million, okay. And so there's been a lot of back and forth about like, is this necessary? Is it not? And it's, you know, we've had some people take a look at it. There was just Siemens that did the whole energy stuff for the town. They wrote up some things about kind of like expected life expectancy. Also, the architect, John Schultz, did some stuff. But there still does seem to be, basically what that last memo said was that, much like landfill liners, the life expectancy of that super heavy-duty plastic is measured generally in like the thousands of years. So that doesn't fail. What would fail is like at a seam somewhere. And that you wouldn't, it's not the kind of thing that you would do like proactively. The whole, it's not like the whole thing is going to deteriorate. You're going to have maybe at some point like an issue here or there. But understandably, there's, there's like this nervousness about, on the library board, wanting to make sure that they're being like as proactive as they need to be and understanding the risks. So one of the things that they brought up was whether they needed to start a reserve fund specifically for the green roof. And Nikki said that, you know, before they got too enthusiastic about that, they needed to realize that there wasn't like extra money in the library budget just to start reserve funds. So there was discussion about the town, once again, contributing to that. And then there was discussion about forming a committee to look at that. And a couple of the library board members volunteered for the committee. And I said I would report back here. And because it does seem like it's one of these things that just like keeps coming up and we should plan together which things, you know, what are the things in that library building that the town is going to be responsible for fundraising for or for, you know, assessing taxpayers for in the long run? Which things are they going to commit to fundraising for? Which things are a threat and which things aren't? We've got the COW, we've got all these things. So I forwarded Silvio, the chair, the most recent communication that I'm aware of from Siemens. And they were going to take a look at that. But basically, I think if for no other, you know, I think our position from what we've looked at is that we probably don't need to be setting up a specific reserve fund for that roof. That we probably, with all the other things that may come up with the library, it may make sense to have some kind of building maintenance reserve. But if you put, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in a reserve account that's specifically for the roof and that might never need to be replaced, then it's not available for something else. So we should kind of.
All right, well.
Close that discussion somehow. And if that takes a small committee to.
Maybe. But right now, I think it'd be a good idea, Audra, I don't think Stephanie or Tom, or maybe Sophie, have you seen the Siemens email?
Probably not. I had to.
Send that email that Elmer wrote to, to the board.
Yes.
So that you're all kind of have understanding of where, what Siemens perception, perspective was on the green roof. That's what you forwarded. For some reason, I, that, that email is probably six months old. Now, I don't know why the library board is just seeing it now. Laurie Allison.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's kind of technical and some people are, are new.
Seen it earlier.
I think they, I think they, they did. It's kind of, it probably is the sort of thing where you send something out to us and not all of us read every single word.
But I think you're, you're right. And this gets to be, the conundrum has been forever that the building, we own it, like the Aquaport. We own it, we own the land, but we don't control what they do in that building. But that, this becomes, it creates a conundrum between who's responsible for what and when. Maybe it's, maybe a group to discuss it. I don't know.
Some kind of document that we both agree on.
Well, maybe, yeah.
Because it, so it doesn't have to keep coming up again and again.
Well, anyway.
Yeah, might, maybe it will.
No, maybe it will.
But I haven't talked about it as much as you have, so I'm not as frustrated.
No, no, I'm not frustrated at all. I just think it's a, when you're talking about a $10,000, I mean, that's one thing. When you're talking about a million dollar, I mean, it's all a little game. And, and I think, but let's get the board getting up to speed so we're all on the same page. And then we can, if they want to, just put together a committee. You know, I'm seeing a problem.
Maybe, I mean, maybe the committee would say, you know, these are the potential threats or this is what the reserve fund would be or.
Right, right.
You know, technically, somebody could pound a stake into that roof, into that top there in the wrong way, and that could puncture it. So.
Really? No.
That's what they've said. If somebody tries to drive a major tent stake into their.
Three feet down?
I'm not saying it's that likely. But, you know, there could be sabotage or something like that. I don't know.
No, maybe they have to.
So we, so we need, do we need money set aside for this possibility or not?
That's the elephant in the room. I agree. But when it, when it do a committee, we're not going to solve it here. So I think it's a good discussion to have. But I'd like the board to be on the same page regarding what we know today. That's all.
Right, that's, yeah. And then just very briefly, the, we have another insect that is a threat. This came from the Conservation Commission meeting, the hemlock woolly adelgid. I don't, this had not been on my radar, but apparently it's a fairly big threat. It attacks hemlock trees. It will eventually kill them if it gets out of control. It's like white powdery. But the Maine Forest Service has a very promising beetle that they plan to release.
Oh, boy.
That, yeah, I was like, oh.
Oh, boy.
And they.
And then we'll be fighting that in three years.
Right. And they're, you know, they're aware of all those types of risks.
Of course, of course.
People have studied it and they've come to the conclusion that it poses no, you know, there's no downside and there's all, there's only an upside. They're going to be releasing it in the state park. They're going to actually let us, there's going to be like a couple day window before where they're going to be able to tell us that the beetles are going to be released and an actual opportunity to be at the beetle release, I'm told. I mean, it is, it's impacting mostly coastal communities. I love our hemlock trees. So it seems like, I don't know very much about it, but it seems like smart people are. They were very excited that Camden was going to be one of the places where they were released. So.
I, the, the trail that's across the street from my house, the big hemlock on the eastern side of that trail is looking really bad. It's looked up bad all. It's a beautiful tree, isn't it?
That's exactly, so.
We should get them to release them there.
That's what Rebecca, that, that's exactly what Rebecca Jacobs from the, from the, she lives over in that area too. And she went there and did a survey and reported that to them because it wasn't in there. There is a thing online where you can report locations. And she reported that too and wanted the beetles there. They're only releasing in the state park right now. And I think they migrate. But if we get there, maybe we can capture some. But that's funny, that's, yeah, that you're obviously paying attention.
All right. Onward. The only thing that I wanted to mention was just a, because I see the sign every time I come down Route 1 South. On Tuesday, October 11th, MDOT will be starting construction on the section of Route 1 that starts at C Street, goes south. On the, only on the, only on. south on the only on the only on one half of that area where there's a nice wooden, well, crumbling wooden fence there, guardrail. But that's that construction is going to go from C Street south towards towards Main Street, obviously, but.
Over Daly Brook.
Of a Daly Bridge. And that's going to cause an entire lane of Route One north to be closed down for a number of weeks.
Should we bike now to the select board?
No.
Oh, this will be perfect for you, Bob. What an opportunity.
I'm going to just park on C Street and take a boat.
Take the live and more shuttle.
But it's going to cause traffic. I mean, we were kind of getting past our we think we're getting past our peak season, but it's still going to cause traffic jams.
Oh, yeah, it's going to be a real inconvenience to the spawning brochard also. But.
Yes, yes.
So we're going to watch them carefully.
If you look at that area, you can see the sidewalk there is sinking, sagging, the whole wall is sagging. But the signs are on the road, October 11. That's it. With that, we'll go to Sophie's favor, which review.
No, I think you haven't given time.
Oh, Tom, did I jump past you?
Good. Appreciate it.
I owe you two now. Then we can move on to the review of FY '23 financials, which we had in the packet. You saw the brief memo. We are all this only reflects, as I understand it, two months of our 12 in the fiscal year. But this is important because it's the it's the red flags that can if anything awry on a budget is where you'll see it. And I always look at the percentage of the year they were talking about and go just just whisk through the whole log list and see which items are bigger percentages. And the reason usually is because they're prepaying something. But sometimes it's not that. Sometimes it's other accounting. That's to me, that's really the core of of financial management control, not signing warrants. This is really the core of it. But if you have any questions and if you have any questions later, I mean, you can ask Jody also. She's always got the great answers. But having Jody gives me a lot more confidence that we don't have to look at it with a magnifying glass. But if you have any questions, bring them up, please. And with that, I will turn to who should do it this week? Allison, how about adjournment motion?
We don't have an executive session?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
In my head, I create one.
I can create one for you if you want.
I I.
Somebody sent.
A motion to adjourn.
Oh, well, that's great news. Thanks, Steph.
Can I have a second? Motion in a second.
I don't want to be swayed.
Second. All those in favor?